To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dan, what you do? Roll call, please.
Mayor Klein.
Here.
Alderman Kleinhardt. Alderman Faggy.
You're.
Alderman Donovan.
Eric.
Alderman Dennis. Alderman Eidman. Alderman Rainey.
I'm here.
Alderman Prince.
You're.
Alderman Stager.
Yeah.
Mayor, we have a form.
Thank you very much.
Move to after discussion at the last meeting, there's just hope there's a need to get some. There's some because if you don't, then they're gonna kill the big ones or kill the other ones. So you've got to kind of thin it out. And some of them, they just need to be, they're just done.
Maybe one on, uh, uh, by the care center's rear entrance and stuff at where we're hanging limb that's now been scraped by a truck.
The tires too?
Uh, maybe.
We'll look at that.
Yeah.
Any questions or anything else that they had on their form?
Uh, item four. Um.
Yes. So you have the included amount, uh, with your, with the first report. Shows the cost of what it's going to be to, um, to do that construction. So that's that section that we had to hold off on because of the puddles that were collecting in front houses. So this was gonna be part of this year's, uh, street repatement. But it's gonna require that we mill down, we replace some of the stormwater so we get it out of people's driveways. Get it into the street where it needs to be, replacing sidewalks. Because they need to be elevated, you need to be wedging that street zones. But it's the last section of South Four, uh, last section of North Fourth Street. And Fourth Street in general that we haven't done, uh, as you can look at, uh, completed.
So was that in our original, uh, estimate? We thought it would cost that much or is that a kind of a surprise?
No, not surprised, but we didn't have that. So we had whatever discount we had from the construction because we didn't do that section.
Right.
But it wasn't that, obviously. It was much less than that. But that's what it's gonna cost to, to complete the project as it's, as if we want to be alright.
Our original bid was just overlaying that section, right? Um, you know, a lot of concern over that stuff because we're already strained down to $200,000. And I've kind of lost track, Happy, of how come we're down that far to 200,000? Any, uh, explanation or why we're down that far to 200,000?
Part of it was the equipment that we had scheduled to buy last year, but moving over this year. And we also moved money from last year to this year for the paving project, which we started up last year. But it just, we didn't have as much in the way of reserves of what we had in the past. But based on that and what the capital items were, it was best to hold it 2,000 or 200,000 for this budget year. And then I think we're gonna get back on schedule next year because our, even though the newspaper showed that things were down over, overall through the year, we've had a better year of, of revenue, uh, for that transportation sales tax.
Right.
And we can revisit it. But we're just, we can sort of begin with the equipment that we need to buy. And we talked about it back home, talked about other equipment, and that's what took away from, kind of, to do some, uh, do some of the paving. Uh, we've also got a, uh, oh, this, this, well, not, uh, not patched, well, my thing I have with the seal truck, remind you. Crack fill, crack fill truck, which we have on order, which is supposed to be in last year's budget, had to get moved to this year, so it hasn't arrived yet. So that was, that was where our costs were going.
I thought tobacco was a dead issue and stuff anyhow. Um, yeah, just, you know, as many things as we need to do and we keep on the short end of the stick because it seems like when we run over, that's where cuts are made.
Yeah, it's one of, you know, the funds you have to move over to that supplement, which is generous. And we moved money there, uh, to, up to the other funds.
Could I ask about item two, the tourism director? What was your general impression in terms of the interest in the position? Was it more than you thought or is it highly competitive, uh, people have concerns, uh?
I'd place a say yes to all of the above.
So it was highly competitive, people had concerns.
Yeah, I mean, because they've, they've seen what's happened over the last few years. Uh, but we had, I think we had a more, a more qualified group this time than what we had the last time.
Okay.
And maybe the last two times. Uh, but everybody brought something different to the table and we're just working our way through those, those individuals, uh, to determine who would be the next tourism director. Uh, but I think we had some, we had some really good candidates this time. Uh, and my thanks to David and the mayor for helping out with the interviews, and they felt the same way.
Did you Zoom or were everything in person?
Most of it was in person, and we had one person that we, that Zoomed in.
And you think, uh, next week?
Hopefully by tomorrow.
It's an offer out, okay.
So Happy, what part of the?
I'm sorry, so tomorrow would be, wh- will we, tomorrow?
Standing off.
Okay.
And then maybe get an acceptance, I could, uh, but I will send out an email blast to let you know.
So Happy that, you know, basically we took a little different approach to manage in this position. Did that help or?
I don't know, because I advertised in a smaller, uh, smaller, um, radius than what I did last time. So I don't know, because after what, what people have seen over the last few times, it's like, I see something that I have to offer and they put their, uh, resumes in. Or one person was from the last group, did not give a very good presentation, came back this time, knocked it out of park. And that's where we are at this point. So I think from the last time, they've learned what, what we're looking for and get a little more studying, looking into the community and understand.
I thought it was a talented group that we got to meet with. Like Happy said, they all brought a little bit of different expertise to the table. But they, they were all very qualified for the position. And I think what we've done as well, just with opening up some of that budget, earmarking some money for an assistant, we're, we're doing our best to set whomever takes that position. We're setting them up for success, so that's what we're, we're hoping it pans out that way.
I was just hoping that with the concerns, you know, we heard of how that position was being managed, that a little different approach might help us keep somebody longer and a better candidate, so, so.
Well, during the budget, the board said, here's what we want to do, we want, this is, the things we want to do to make this person successful. So we included that, they'd seen that. They paid attention to the meetings, they paid attention to these meetings, so they feel they've got support. So maybe that was a little more, where it felt like, okay, they really do want to succeed and they want me to succeed.
We've tried to take all the feedback from various groups and, you know, interested parties and try to take that into the interview and, and really ask those questions to, to hear those answers from the candidate directly. So we're hopeful.
Sounds good.
Anything else?
All right. Catch tourism hat on? All right. Good tourism update.
Uh, so upcoming events, Night of the Werewolf, uh, it's put on by the Center for French Women and Life. Uh, it's downtown St. Jenny, the Tactile Heritage and the Deja Vu's very reunion are all in the same day, that's at the end of October. I think the Calipso Loser is coming up on the fourth of November. And that's, that's been fairly popular, we see a thousand to two thousand people coming in for that. Uh, website visitors are around 5,000 for September, uh, 145,000 impressions. Uh, Jay Redney, who's reworking the website, sends me the misinformation every month, uh, from Google and says this website's doing well. It may not be 100%, but it is pulling people in and they're seeing what they need to see and the numbers are pretty good. So we keep doing what we're doing. Um, the police academy was this past Saturday. Doug Nicholson sent me an email or sent me a, a message on Facebook, said they have 153 visitors. You know, something, uh, for this past Saturday. Uh, and it was good reaction to our Facebook posts. Uh, and Facebook reach was pretty high over the last 30 days, especially right in the middle of September with October just about 13,000 people that, uh, that was part of that group, but we had a peak right about that time. Uh, marketing plan submittals have been received, they were due Tuesday. Looked at them, they got some, two really good, uh, submittals. Uh, we'll show it to tourism on Tuesday and give them a chance to get some, get some material off of that. And maybe then look at contracting, getting your marketing plans started. And that's a four to six month process, by the way. It's not overnight, but this is to help see the new tourism, to succeed in the future.
I think, I'd started looking at some of those proposals and some of them were, um, like you said, were, you know, it's, it's a nice brochure, so hopefully they, you know, can do what they say, but there were some interesting, there was a lot of hard work put into it, so.
Yes. We had sent out four, uh, four requests, we'd seen three, and one person was not on our, our usual request list. So they should, the message did get out there. Any questions?
I think that kind of goes back to, uh, Bob, on your point about, you know, the, the new position. I think we have changed the structure, including this new marketing plan being in place, changing their salary, kind of in, in line with that salary study that we did. Uh, increasing their budget by a little bit, giving them a part-time assistant. So you would think we have done something different to ensure this person has a better, you know, track record than some of the ones in the past.
Welcome change.
All right. Anything else tourism? Thank you, Happy. Uh, we'll move to, uh, Chief Stager.
I think everyone should have my report in front of you, uh, on the calls, as of today at 10:30 this morning, we are actually at 210 calls for the year. Last year we ran 224, so we're at 14 calls, what we did last year, and still have two and a half months. So I anticipate we'll probably be due 250, 250 or 260 for the year. Uh, do have a contact from another female that has asked about joining the fire department. Uh, she was a member of another local department, moved away and moved back and now living at St. Jen. She was supposed to come last Wednesday and pick up an application, I haven't seen her yet, she was busy, so hopefully this week. Along the same thing with staffing, if you follow our Facebook post, we have a open house planned at the firehouse, kind of open house, slash recruiting thing going on, we'll have some different things people can try if they want to see what it's like being a fireman. We'll have, uh, our smokehouse up, we'll have several different things, demos of our ladder trucks, some rope rescue type things. So trying to drum up some interest there. Uh, the suburban thing, I talked to them, they got the quote that's gonna be before you guys for approval for lights, cires and things. The insurance company is gonna reimburse us for that. And if we approve it, then they say in mid to late November, and I checked on the radio grant that I was waiting on mobiles. Uh, they're six weeks out on installation, so the second round of grants for the last of the mobiles will be the last week of November when they're getting installed. Other than that, you can see by our miscellaneous section, we had a busy September and we're gonna have even busier October with PRs and things like that. Participating in backstoppers. We also had the Fire Engine Rally where we took our brush truck that we newly completed up there and had it on display and got judged and we brought home the award for the best ground cover apparatus. Uh, we've only gone up there five times and all the five, every time we've been up there, we've brought back a plaque, our award for the quality of the equipment that we have. So we thank the city for backing us on that and it kind of shows the talent of the guys we have doing the maintenance over there. Uh, I'd be open for any questions.
Are you just still on backboard for all these Knox boxes? It's all, it seems like they, seems like that's been linked.
They're in and people have them, but we haven't gotten it installed yet where we go put the key in.
I see.
Uh, one of them, I think they have misplaced and are trying to locate, and the other one, we had an issue where he installed it in a location that it can't be used and he's one of our clients that has kind of been a, not really a thorn, but not easy to deal with on a few occasions. So we, we're trying to work things out, but
Yeah.
we can't really force them to do a whole lot of stuff.
Yeah. No worries. Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thanks, Kenny.
Then we'll move to, uh, community development after, uh, David Bova.
Good evening. Got my report there. From the Heritage Commission standpoint, we had our event a couple of weekends ago, we had, uh, good participation, good turnout, uh, went really well. Hope to hell of another one here next year or two, so, uh, got a lot out of that. Uh, you see the numbers there from the building department, it is only two weeks, I reported to you only two weeks ago, kind of off kilter, but, uh, that's only two weeks of, uh, numbers there. We do have one additional sidewalk violation, I believe the tear out started this afternoon, but if not, it will start early next week. So we're working with that property owner to make sure they saw the access. Uh, under the comprehensive plan, I am meeting with RPC tomorrow morning to kind of go over the new sections that have been, uh, initially written. And then I'm hoping to have another public meeting scheduled either the end of this month or early November. Uh, you can see the rest of the report there, I did want to add, uh, Alderman Stager contacted me, we're gonna be meeting with, uh, an engineer.
Port Authority Engineer.
Port Authority Engineer.
Yep.
Uh, some members of the Rotary next week at the ferry landing to, uh, take that to the next step, hopefully.
Yeah, uh, 2 o'clock on Monday, if anybody's interested, they're more welcome to join, um, we're gonna, on Monday, yep. So, um, Ron Emmon was able to, uh, get the support of the, uh, engineer that supports the Port Authority. And so he's gonna grant us, uh, some of his engineer expertise on the project, so.
Where, where is that meeting?
At the ferry landing, 2 o'clock.
On site.
Yeah, on site. He's trying to get a lay of land, kind of figure out what, you know, what the sculptural work's gonna be, so.
But is that still contingent on the railroad's?
Easement, or they could gift us the property too, I guess, so.
Right.
I like the optimism.
It's not a matter of if, just a matter of when, so.
So that's all I have, gentlemen, unless you have any.
I got one more on your, uh, building permits, you got two, uh, is that just, that's evenings for, uh, that's not new construction, that's?
That, that could be a roof fence, yeah.
And then, uh, what, I'm sorry, when do you think the, the late October comprehensive plan meeting will be?
The public meeting?
Yep.
I think it'll be either the last week of October or the first week of November.
Okay.
Yeah. Once, um, I have a date, I'll send it out. Uh, there is a, uh, steering committee and, uh, Alderman Rainey is part of that, but, uh, I mean, anybody would be invited. Any other questions? That'll end.
Thank you, Dave.
Yes.
Okay, at this time, we will open a public hearing. Uh, the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri, uh, will hold a public hearing pursuant to municipal code section 215 dot 040 to hear evidence regarding the notice of abatement sent to Timothy C. Bowman and/or anyone with ownership interest in the property located at 58 South Main Street. Evidence will be heard regarding the notice of abatement to determine if a public nuisance exists and whether to issue an order of abatement. We will open the public hearing at 6:21.
Um, Mr. Bowman?
Yes.
Um, we're gonna present evidence. Uh, if I can, I just want to give you a heads up, we're, we're gonna present evidence for the city. And then if you want to present evidence, you're gonna do, you can do so after Mr. Mr. Bowman's done. About what, um, because it's a hearing, you'll both need to be sworn in if you wanna, if you want to testify and give evidence.
Well, what I wanted to say was like I told Mr. Bowman that.
Well, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we're gonna start with Mr. Bowman's testimony. And then if you want to testify or say whatever you want to say, then you can go immediately after that, but I, I'd like for you to be sworn in now. And so you swear you both in at the same time and then we'll get, get started. Yes, please.
Okay, just raise your hand. Do you affirm that the evidence you shall give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, so we'll, um, start with you, Mr. Bowman, if you can, well, introduce yourself to the purposes of the hearing, uh, your position, um, with the city.
David Bova, Assistant City Administrator.
And, um, this, um, hearing is with regards to property located at 58 South Main Street, correct?
Correct.
Now, there's a, I think a little bit of a history with regard to this, this property with the city as far as nuisance, uh, type of issues, is that fair to say?
Yes.
So can you, can you give the board, um, a little, just a brief history of the activities and the involvement uh, of the city with regard to nuisance issues with this property?
Uh, in 2021, we had some complaints from, uh, some of our own staff at the Welcome Center and National Park Service staff of falling bricks. Uh, at that point, I, uh, communicated with Mr. Bowman about the fact that there were some building issues that need to be addressed. Um, that didn't occur right away, so I issued a notice of violation. Mr. Bowman stated he could not find anyone to do the work. So I contacted a few masons, we went there, looked it over, gave that information to Mr. Bowman. Gave him additional six months at that point, uh, and no work was completed. During 2022 and then later into 23, we had additional complaints, not only from National Park Service and our own staff, but from a couple of tourists that were leaving the Welcome Center, uh, of falling bricks again. And you can see by the pictures, the deterioration over the course of two years. At that point, issued another notice of violation with no response, and then of course, a notice of abatement.
So the, uh, and I should have really started with the description of the property. The address is 58 South Main Street, anyways, where is it relative to the, the Welcome Center property of the city?
It is directly next door to the Welcome Center.
So is that on the north side?
Correct.
Thank you, and, and can you describe the structure just generally that's at that location?
It's a two-story brick structure.
And, um, I think you, you provided the, the board with photographs of the building, right?
Correct.
Have you given Mr. Bowman a picassino, if not? You know, which, I will.
I will.
And, uh, and the person you mentioned referring to is Mr. Bowman. He's the gentleman you talked to before and he's the gentleman that's here in the picture, right?
That's correct.
And this property is actually according to the Department of Defense owned by the Bowman Trust and he's the trust.
That's correct.
All right, so let's, let's go through these pictures, uh, one by one. Um, and I, I don't, I guess, uh, I think we all have the same word, so I'm looking at, can you see this one? Can you describe this picture that at the bottom that says closed up a hole below chimney in the north side of building, April twenty twenty-one?
Yes, this is a photograph of the chimney on the north side of the building. Take, it's taken in April twenty twenty-one. Second page is basically the same chimney taken in May of twenty twenty-three. Uh, basically so that you could see the deterioration that occurred over the course of two years.
Can you describe it? I mean, it looks to me that you tell me, and it looks like it's been circled a little bit in the picture.
Yes, what I wanted to point out was what bricks were there in April and what bricks are now missing in May of twenty-three.
And so it would appear that this part of the structure would be open to the, the elements just looking from the exterior. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
All right, so then the, the next picture, uh, in order, is it out of the same area?
No, this is a close-up of the chimney on the south side. This would be the one that butts up against the side that butts up against the Welcome Center. And you can see there again, a picture from April twenty twenty-one. Turn the page and there's a significant difference or deterioration in the chimney in May of twenty twenty-three.
It's, it's clear that there's like a hole in the wall there and those bricks, uh, presumably falling off and certainly are not there along the wall.
Correct.
All right, the next picture.
Uh, the next page is, uh, pictures of loose bricks along the parapet. You can see how they have moved out and actually some of them are missing. Um, they're on two different sides of the building.
Now, this, uh, this building is to the north of the Welcome Center. Um, the building itself is pretty close to the public sidewalk, isn't it?
Yes, sir. The picture on the top of this page, that is along the public sidewalk.
Okay, and, um, it is, uh, uh, how far back is it set approximately? I'm trying to remember. I mean, there's a sidewalk and there's not much, is it maybe?
Maybe two foot.
Two feet, okay. And it was pretty close. So certainly if a brick falls off of the second floor, it certain, there's certainly an immediate risk of it falling on somebody's head that happened to walk in.
Yes.
Uh, and so they, this picture that you're describing is that front part of the building, is that correct?
This is the front. Well, these are actually both front.
Okay, great. Uh, anything else you want to mention about that picture?
No, I would add though, concerning the chimney, you mentioned the threat of falling brick. We have actually sectioned off underneath this chimney because bricks have fallen and the Welcome Center has a picnic table right there where the bricks have fallen.
And so we, we kind of sectioned that also pretty close to this neighboring property.
Correct.
Before the bricks, it's been in there.
Correct.
All right, the next picture.
The next two pictures are of windows. Uh, again, these are kind of a before and after. The first one is in April twenty-one. I've circled a brick and some, uh, brickwork that was there. And then in May twenty twenty-three, it is gone. In addition, there is missing brick on the other side of the window and the two boards, which I can only assume were filled in when the original uh, uh, part was taken out, the stone part are loose. They're moving.
And, and was this, uh, this in the main, the, the main floor of the building or?
This is the second.
The second. All right, the next picture that's, I think three images on it?
Yeah, so these are examples of additional windows that have either had loose brick or severely deteriorating wood around them. You can see holes uh, here. You can see holes here. Um, and there are actually more holes here and maybe not as noticeable on the bottom left, but holes around the windows.
And then the last picture I have is a picture that's four inches in it?
Yes.
Just trying to see what that shows.
This final picture shows, uh, spots where there's severe mortar deterioration and spalling of the brick. So you can see here where there's hardly any mortar in between several of these bricks in the two top pictures. And then the two bottom pictures, you can see severe spalling in certain areas where the brick is just kind of deteriorating away.
And, uh, the term spalling?
This, where the brick is deteriorating.
And now in the, um, uh, the condition of this, this property as you described it, um, would you consider this and, uh, under the city's code, a danger to the public and a public nuisance?
Yes, sir.
And are you asking the, um, the board of all to declare this property as a public nuisance and order an abatement? Um, by the property owner, um, at this time?
Yes, sir.
And, and I, and I think we circulated proposed, uh, proposed findings that would, uh, allow him sixty days to make these repairs. If I remember correctly, the code would, we have to give him at least twenty days, but the proposal was that he's be granted sixty days to try to get the repairs done, right?
Yes, sir.
Uh, and so, uh, are you asking for a further order from the board that if those repairs are not completed in that sixty days, that the city uh, officials be authorized to contract with someone to complete the repairs and then assess a lien for those expenses out of the property?
Yes, sir.
I think you already mentioned that, I'm sorry. Uh, there was a notice published and of course Mr. Bowman's here, there was a notice published to the public, uh, for anybody that has interest in the property that this hearing is going to conduct today.
Yes, personally served to Mr. Rowan and published.
All right, I don't have any other questions. If anybody else has any questions for him, otherwise I think we should give to Mr. Bowman.
So we can ask questions?
Yes, sir.
How is this building being utilized?
It's a residence.
Single family or is it?
I believe Mr. Bowman.
Oh, okay.
On the bottom floor.
Any other questions?
And that concludes the city's evidence. Mr. Bowman, if you want to, if there's anything?
Like when I first bought this building, that was after Frank Myers had bought a, what an interpreter center or information center is now. He came over to me and asked me to be quiet that this wall on the south side lays partly on city property. So he asked me to be quiet and he'd get back with me because the money was starting to come in for that project over there. So I said, okay, well, never heard nothing, never heard nothing. Brought it up again, well, just hold off on it. Okay, I spent, and that was in eighty-three when I bought the place. Then in ninety-three, I had it surveyed myself to have it cleared. And nothing's ever been done about that. And like I told Mr. Bowman, I'm not sticking any money into it until the property line is cleared. Because I don't have somebody come over and saying, well, it's been laying on our property. We're just gonna take your house. So I want that cleared first before I do any work on it. That's about all I really have, but. And once it gets cleared, then I'll get started on doing, looking for a contractor or somebody else to get the work done for me.
I can just ask you, has anybody from the city made a claim as to the ownership of your property?
Mr. Bowman talked to me a few times and like I said, I told him I wasn't gonna stick any money into it until the property line is cleared.
Okay, well, what I'm asking is, has anybody from the city claimed that, that you don't own the property, the trust doesn't own the property and the city owns it?
No, I own the property, but where my south wall is next to the, uh, information center, that's part of that wall lays on that property.
Okay, but would, would you agree that, that, that this work needs to be done to repair this, the areas that Mr. Bowman has described with regard to the loose brick in those windows?
Yeah, I'd get that fixed once the property is cleared and then my name, you know, that's not a whole lot, but I even had it surveyed in ninety-three and had it brought up and nothing was ever done about it again. So I just, that's it. I ain't messing with it till he's come to me.
Um, I got a question for you, Mark.
Sure.
Um, if there is a dispute over this property line, um, because it obviously sounds like that's the sticking point here. Um, how can we resolve that?
There is no dispute over the property.
Pardon me?
There is no dispute over the property. The city is not making a claim under this gentleman's property. Uh, the, the, the building, the issue before the board is whether the building is in need of these repairs and whether the property owner should be ordered to make those repairs. And if he doesn't, whether the city should be authorized to do it or in place of the other property. There is no property line dispute. So the survey, I mean, there's no claim.
The survey clearly shows that we don't own part of that wall.
I, I, I don't know what you're talking about because there's no evidence in that in this hearing. I literally have no idea what you're referencing because it's not evidence in this hearing.
But it seems like that's a major sticking point here of determining.
Well, what I'm, what I'm telling you is that is irrelevant.
Right.
To the issues before the board tonight. Sorry, we've lost, but it's about the condition of the building and whether or not these repairs need to be made in the state or to the community period. And, and you don't have to order it. I'm just saying that's what the issue is. Any other issues that, that with regard to any dispute of the ownership of the building? And then sometimes it does occur. Sometimes we have a bank involved, sometimes we have a third party involved. Sometimes we have heirs of the estate and they're all fighting over it. Irrelevant for our purposes to, to, to address whether or not our repairs need to be made. Because it's public nuisance and it has to be ordered and then a lien is placed on the property for whoever it owns.
Yes. If, if anything, the property owner could argue just the opposite and take the city to court and claim that that property is his.
You could absolutely, if there's, if, if he thinks there's a, a cloud in his title, he can absolutely file a quiet title lawsuit and say it is and it's property. And again, that's not before this board.
You know, being around construction over fifty years and understanding true masonry buildings, um, if this building is expected to live any longer, it needs to have something done.
Well, I think at this point, the, the evidence portion of the hearing, unless there's some other questions or testimony that's been concluded, it's up to the board to go to authorize the findings of backdoor or to not. It's just up to you to declare both the evidence and.
We get to close the evidence on this public.
What's the next steps after we close?
We would need to vote.
That's separate after the hearing is over, correct?
Yeah, we'll, we'll close the hearing when we need to vote. So if the evidence, is there any other discussion on this right now? Not? Then I will close the public hearing at six thirty-seven.
Are you calling for a vote on the abatement?
Yes.
Do you need a motion for that?
What, what I'm looking for is a motion to approve the findings of back conclusions of law in order to bait nuisance that's been presented, unless you want to make some amendments to that.
Um, discussion. Um, I don't know how the board feels about this, but I mean, I think it would be smart if Mr. Bowman pursued any legal means that he wanted on the property lines and, and survey that he has and, but the building has to be fixed. So while he, if he, if he chooses to pursue that, I think still in the meantime, the, the property has to be fixed.
I, I mean, I agree with you, Joe. I, I guess what I don't understand was the survey should have been, uh, conclusive of where the property line ends. Um, I guess I don't understand why we're at a standstill there. Um, I mean, the building needs to be fixed or it's gonna continue to deteriorate. And once it gets to a certain point, it's not gonna be salvaged. I'm so confused why we're at a stalemate here.
Well, I can appreciate Mark's advice to the board, uh, as far as what we're to consider tonight, but I mean, in a, in a roundabout way, that issue was resolved a few minutes ago. I mean, city has no claim, not, not trying to take a property. I mean, it's all on city record or a public record, so there is no more dispute. So we just need to start a sixty day clock, right, to, to make repairs?
That's the, yeah, that's the proposal on the table. I, I do believe Dave wanted to.
Yeah, I just wanted to stay, and maybe I'm reiterating what Mark said. We are not at a stalemate. The city, from our standpoint.
I agree, the property owner is, but.
I would like to say something too. Like I've told them before, nothing's ever been done about that property line. They just keep pushing me off and I just finally, that's enough. It's either it's clear towards that section of the property is in my name. I'm not gonna do any work on it until it is cleared up. Because I'm not gonna fix it, then ask somebody come along and say, wait, that's laying on prog, or city property. And that is my concern.
But I would think, Mr. Bowman, that you would pursue that and, and, and have, um, you, either get an easement or have, have it resurveyed and ask the city for.
I've had it resurveyed and I, like I said, I brought it back. That was in nineteen ninety-three and I brought it to the attention of the board back then and nothing was ever said or done about it.
If you're trying to protect your interest in the building, I think you would not let something sit for twenty years, uh, thirty years. I, I think you'd be more proactive and try to get the ground in, in your name. I, I understand your concern and hesitation to fix it, but there's not gonna be much to fix and, and it, it's, it's gonna be gone.
Well, if the property was cleared, I'd be having somebody on as soon as I can.
But it's, that's not our responsibility to get you a clear title to sell the property.
Well, the property was bought by the city where the, uh, information center is, and that was on there then. It should have been taken care of then, but Frank Myers didn't do anything about it. Then after I bought my house, a place at fifty-eight South Main, he came over to me and asked me to be quiet about it. He'd take care of it because the money was starting to come in for his project. Like I said, nobody's ever gotten back to me and I brought it up before. I've never heard no more about it, so I just let it go until somebody finally came up to me and said something.
But we have been coming up to you for years now and been trying to get some resolution and you haven't pursued.
That property line is still not cleared.
I think some of the burden falls on you to take care of that, though.
Or shouldn't I have been taking care of it when Frank Myers bought that?
I don't know. I don't want, I don't know what was the conversation between you two, so I, I don't want to speculate on that.
No, that's where all this is coming from. Nothing, and I, as brought up before, like I said, in ninety-three, I had a board member or somebody bring it up then and nothing was ever said, nothing, nobody ever got back to me on it, so.
I think I gotta ask you a simple question. Where is the property line?
It's on the south side of the building towards the, well, the information center. It runs like that wall out to, towards the street, but part of that wall lays on that property.
And your survey stated that?
Yeah, it's, it's a fact.
Does it run like a foot through the building or?
Pardon?
Does it run like a foot through the building or?
I'm not sure how far it is, but I did have, like I said, resurveyed.
Wait a minute, you just said you don't understand, but you had a certified survey done. They established the exact corners, not questionable corners. They established exact corners. If there's an exact certified corner there.
He moved it to where it's cleared the wall, moved the property on the markers to where it cleared the property.
You, you can't do that in a survey. A certify is certified and it is the exact corner. It's not a, not somebody can move or guess where it is. It has to be exact.
Again, we're beating a dead horse here, even.
This is discussion.
Well, I know, but even considering his concern here, that only addresses a couple of the issues of the total project here. Um, it only affects the one wall. There's still other walls that have not been addressed for a long time.
That's a good point.
So, I mean, my recommendation would be to start on everything else that isn't on that wall and we'll try to get that cleared up so you can clear up or fix that wall. But the rest of the building is not in question and it's, it's not taken care of either.
If the property owner is not claiming ownership for the property that needs to be repaired, he's waiving any objections to the city ordering the repair doing the, putting a note for the property he doesn't own. It's irrelevant. It's irrelevant.
I, I had it resurfaced towards clearing. Here's a copy of it. He moved a survey marks from over here where it lay, the wall lays on it to over here to where it clears the lot wall. And that was done by Mike Zoner. He was a, he was a county surveyor for I don't know how many years.
But it's never been recorded and the city hasn't signed off on it.
That's what I'm waiting for is city okay's it? The yeah, I'll get started on, but I want the paper saved.
So he, he's proposing a new survey, a new, a new parcel. But the city has never signed off to release that and it's never been recorded. So it still goes by the original survey. So, Mr. Bowman, these are separate issues. I mean, I understand that you don't want to move forward until this is adopted, but, but it's been thirty years. So we haven't heard from you since nineteen ninety-three. This is the first I've heard of it. And, and we've been trying to pursue you for two years to have the, the building fixed.
But like I said, it tells, I told Mr. Bowman that, that I wasn't doing anything until it's cleared.
So why wouldn't you do anything to the other three walls? Just because it's one wall?
It's still a wall of my property and I, I want it all cleared before sticking the money into it. I think that's the only sensible, have part of your house laid on somebody else's property. You wouldn't fix up all the rest of it and just leave that part fall down.
But I think I'd take the responsibility and make sure I owned the whole building.
That's what I'm saying.
Property, but that's my responsibility, uh, not the city's, I guess.
Well, Mr. Bo, or, Mr. Myers told me that after I'd bought that property and he said he'd take care of it, which is nothing was ever done. So he never got back with me. I brought it up before, nothing was ever done. I think that falls under some of the city's responsibility or something wasn't done earlier.
It does not. It does not. It's not the city's responsibility to clear somebody else's owner of their property.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bowman. I appreciate that.
Is that all we can before then?
Yeah, at this time, I, I think we'll move forward if you guys do the matter at hand here and.
If anybody wants to go over this later on sometime, give me a call or a letter and I'll bring whatever I got and show it to you and explain it to you.
Sure thing. We appreciate you coming here tonight too.
I'd be, I would my table on this until the next meeting. I think it's a reasonable request. We're about ready to sell the proper, gift the property to the park service anyway. I don't think they need that sliver of ground. I think it would be a good compromise. I, I understand the, the city attorney's point. We can move forward without that, but I think as good government, I think if it's that easy to a- adopt the new survey, clears up his claim to title and he's then forcing with no, he, he's not fighting anything else except for that little sliver of ground. So, and I don't know anything about that. I, I understand his point and can we move forward? I think so. We can, but.
I think we start the clock, right?
Can we, can we just suggest when we decide on this and I, we can get a lot done in sixty days. But he's got to take some initiative. The, the question is whether or not you're going to do these repairs or the repairs. And if he doesn't, then the city has to do it after. So the city's not going to take any action of this, can't take any action of this for at least sixty days, assuming that you order this. You can push that deed out further if you want. But when, but when bricks fall off the building, that's.
Peter repaired the other three walls. I feel differently.
Yeah, I agree.
But.
Well, and the weather's going to get colder here soon. I think the sooner we start the clock, the better.
What's his, um, what, what's his next steps on, on this, to have that new survey adopted? He just has to petition the city to.
I've never seen the survey.
Well, I know.
Literally have no clue about what he's saying.
He's never presented the survey to me. If he has a survey and it's certified, he can record it with a recorder deeds and be done.
Well, not, well, not without, that's not true. Yeah. Yeah.
It does not determine ownership.
Yeah.
Period. So again, we far field on what's before you is whether or not you're going to order these repairs to be done in sixty days. They have not authorized the city to do it. City doesn't even have to do it in the upper sixty days. However, there is a responsibility to make the repairs after he doesn't do it. Because you're authorized, you're ordering the city to do it. At that point, if you authorize it before you just decide not to do it, but the ownership issue is completely separate matter. Can't stress that out.
After looking at those pictures, I mean, you're looking at an expensive repair here. Um, anybody understands true masonry buildings? I mean, there is no wood or steel structure there. It's brick and brick and these buildings crumble all the time in the city and partial walls collapse and you know, if we go in there and start repairing this wall, I mean, the liability is never going to end.
The repairs need just to make it safe, not to make it pretty. So he does all the incentive of doing it himself in a professional manner.
It's going to be done concurrently. It's a boundary adjustment. We can do it in-house. The board just has to approve it. I've not seen anything. I've not seen anything. We, we have an issue that we need to resolve and we can resolve both of them, but.
True.
Does it have to be sixty days or can we?
It has to be at least twenty.
I mean.
Proposing sixty.
Can we make it seventy, which gives them ten extra days to get this other stuff taken care of? It shouldn't take more than ten days to do that, should it?
And that's up to you. You.
He can start on that tomorrow.
Yeah.
Depends on if you want to read it twice at one meeting or not. It depends on what kind of information we get and how fast it comes from him. I mean, at this point, we've been trying to get prepared down and we've not seen any response.
Joe, I can appreciate where your heart is at in, in your comments about that, but I, I can't see pulling this off to another, another meeting. We should do what we can to resolve this tonight.
Oh man, seven sixty, make it seven.
Yeah, well, I mean, I was, I guess I'll speak on Joe's.
But I mean, I agree. I, I think if the city's willing to work with him on, um, the adjustment, I think that really puts him in a bind and I'm okay with moving forward. Um, with that, I think everyone here would be okay with granting him that foot of ground so that he, you know, I, I can see his concern, so.
I think that issue is very easily referred up. So I think it's been two plus years at this point since some of these photos.
So what motion do you need then?
I'm, I'm looking for a motion to approve the findings of fact and conclusions of law in order to make nuisance.
I make so motion.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you all. Thank you, Mark, for your clarification.
Keep us moving.
Now at this time, we'll open up the meeting to public comment. Okay. Move to tonight's consent agenda.
Move to approve. Second.
A motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Takes us to old business. This will be a second reading of bill number four, five, eight, eight. This is an ordinance providing for the issuance and collection of special tax bills and levying a special assessment against the lots, tracts and pieces of land for sidewalk improvements. Need to approve. Second. Motion in a second. Can you do a little call, please?
Aye.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Steyer?
Yes.
Five yes, zero no's, three absent. Bill number forty-five eighty-eight now becomes ordinance forty-five zero nine.
Thank you. Move to a first reading of bill number four, five, eight, nine. This is an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to sign documents related to the release of easement and transfer of property to James T. Beckerman, the property where the Blaine Street water tank was located.
I have one question about that. Um, have we discontinued that line going up the easement or disconnected it or what?
Is that line disconnected? Yeah.
It is.
It's not physically disconnected. The valve was shut down to that one.
So is that enough? Enough to abandon?
We have to disconnect it. The street, the working valve in the street, we can abandon.
Okay.
Move to approve. Second.
Whatever.
Hold a second.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Take us to a first reading of bill number four, five, nine, zero. This is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an S A, S A A S services agreement with Genesis Inc. from San Diego, California that amount not to exceed six thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars over a thirty-six month contract for an emergency alert texting program.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that will take us to a first reading for bill number four, five, nine, one. This is an ordinance of the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri approving a tax exempt equipment lease purchase agreement with First State Community Bank for the purchase of two police vehicles.
Um, discussion here, uh, six hundred and thirteen thousand dollar amount. Um, you know, reflects a pretty good increase over what we've had in the past. Is that just cost of vehicles and cost of the lease?
What was used to seem, uh, see the cooperative purchasing program in the state is pretty much no longer. I mean, everything's going closer to retail than before. And every department sees it and there are no vehicles out there, um, that are, are being shot cheaper to the city. There's no, no truck, no, uh, police interceptive vehicles. Everything's, everything's, um, elevated.
So what is the breakdown of that number? How much is the vehicle and how much is the lease interest?
It should be in that middle word.
I didn't.
Yeah, it should be in that middle word.
This is a budget item, right?
On the back of one of them.
No, I didn't.
Let's see. So, oh, oh, I was trying to say, here's, here's the breakdown. So it's like six pages in on the backside.
Right.
Keith Trump wanted me to let you know that he has secured the financing for that and approved for it. Uh, we've actually located a vehicle, so we won't run into the issue that we had last year where it took us forever to get our two patrol vehicle that we ordered. So we're just a few days out and I think I heard a number of fifty to sixty days out of actually it being in the savings or until.
Move to approve. Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move for a second reading.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second for a second reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, this will be a second reading of bill number four, five, nine, one. This is an ordinance of the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri approving a tax exempt equipment lease purchase agreement for First State Community Bank for the purchase of two, uh, police vehicles.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion. I, I normally don't approve second, but I know that they were up at this time crunch to get this, uh, approved funding, uh, interest rate. So in the essence of saving, uh, the city some money, um, I, uh, motion to have the second reading tonight. I know this is, and a lot of times, police cars are a hot topic among citizens and I, um, I think it's in the best censures of the city to move forward with this second reading.
So we did have a motion in a second for, for the second reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I had to roll call for second reading.
Well, okay. So, oh wait, sorry. We did. I'm sorry. There was a motion for the approval of the.
Alderman Steyer?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Fahy?
Yes.
Five yes, zero no's, three absent. Bill number forty-five ninety-one now becomes ordinance forty-five ten.
Any other business this time? Okay, with that, I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, Mayor.
The order, uh, will move to approval of tonight's work session agenda.
I'll move.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, I've got one other, under, when we get to other business, I got one thing about a speed limit sign, so don't let me forget.
Okay. Work session agenda item number one is the Maple Street.
Flip it over and over.
Water main extension. And I believe we have some guests.
Quite a few.
Possibly. Good evening, everyone. Um, we're here this evening, um, to make you aware of and to hopefully discuss, uh, an opportunity that we would have to maybe, um, change the timeline that, that I think you all have on your, uh, plan to update water mains. Um, one of the significant issues that we ran into, uh, with attempting to put an early childhood center at that location is a six inch water main, uh, does not exist up to that property. So down at Ninth and Maple is where the six inch water main, as far as I'm aware, six inch water main terminates into a four inch water main and then that travels the rest of the distance up the hill. Um, so we had to adjust our first bid package and pull off the utilities, uh, from that bid package because we're, we're kind of stuck until we know where we are. And I wanted to bring the information to you, make you aware of it, um, see if there was an opportunity, uh, to adjust the timeline. I know the numbers that we presented here, uh, are high. Um, and, and I have a budget at the school district too, so I know what you're dealing with. Uh, but I thought that having the conversation and then trying to be transparent was very important. Um, we don't want to do anything in that area of the city that has the potential. I'm sorry, fan club. That has the potential to negatively impact residents in that area. We don't, we don't want to put a facility there that's going to, um, lower water pressure. Uh, from what I understand, the water pressure in that region isn't, um, what it could be. So we are here to, uh, present the information to you, uh, answer any questions that you have and just see if there's an opportunity to, to change the timeline. We know that that was, I think originally happy, correct me if I'm wrong, scheduled for twenty-four and got pushed to twenty-five due to budgetary constraints.
Yeah, it was originally scheduled for twenty-five.
Originally scheduled for twenty-five.
Been kind of behind anyways, so it would have been probably twenty-six.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. So I'll entertain any questions or I will probably defer to the people that are with me if you have any questions.
Well, your concern about the water pressure after living up there for sixty-nine years and stuff, I can tell you the water pressure is not good. Uh, and any impact on it would definitely have a negative impact on the rest of us. Um, and also I guess on this cost estimate sheet, you know, you had mentioned in roadway and, and ride away, um, And also, I guess on this cost estimate sheet, you know, you had mentioned in roadway and, and right of way, um, just wondering what the right of way is up through Maple.
The easement.
Yeah, so you're talking in either in the yards or in the, I think the roadway, um, I, I think it's a, I think that's a forty foot right of way, that's only forty foot paid.
How much?
Forty foot right of way, thirty foot paid.
And how much is paid?
Thirty.
Thirty.
Yeah.
Being one of the roadways we rebuilt many years, so I hate to see that in the roadway, uh, it was already starting to deteriorate enough. In fact, that's the one I brought to your attention about a possible coating of some sort to preserve it before it deteriorates anymore, but.
One thing Steve and I have talked about is we think, we're not sure, we'd have to pummel and look, and we think the six inch may extend into of Maple, but we're not sure how far. So you're kind of taking a chance of where does it, where does it actually end, and then you got to extend from there.
But these es- these estimates are at the street corner now, so this is worst case scenario is what you're thinking?
Yes, and these are just estimates, I want to be clear.
Yeah, 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 yeah. But you might save ten or twenty foot and not have to, yeah, okay.
So that's the second part of water is the disposal of, uh, I know that's not part of the discussion and stuff, but what is the plan for disposal of the sanitary sewers in that area?
Joe? So we have a plan for sanitary sewer extension down south right of way of Maple Street to tie in to the existing manhole.
So is that in these numbers or is not?
No, that's separate. That's a, that's clearly separate part of the bid package.
We talk about one without the other.
Well, they were already planning that, I think. That was already on you guys, and you guys were already planning for that, correct?
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause once you, I believe, once you get past that manhole, excuse me, I think it was forty or fifty feet, it reduces down to like a four or six inch. I think four inch line, I said that we can't tie into, so rather than going all the way down the street, we're going in the right of way on the south side down until we get to that manhole and coming into that existing.
Please don't paraphrase me.
Well, connected in manhole, we're gonna have to figure it out, patch it, but it's a small section.
Oh, the gas company's doing enough of that now, so.
And I, I think there's enough, I mean, I don't have survey data for the north side of the roadway other than up at the intersection that, um, there's a good possibility there is some right of way to, to put that water line in and not have to tear up the street. But there is some sidewalks, driveway entrances and things that, you know, would have to be cut out or removed and put back in.
And you talk about a pump station, you, you don't, wha- what's the unknown about the pump station, you know, increasing the pressure on that four inch pipe versus putting in a six inch pipe? I don't understand the difference, and you're just not sure if it's gonna work?
Uh, well, a four inch pipe with a, a fire pump at the school, uh, don't think that we'll get the volume we need for a fire suppression system.
Okay, so, and it, I wouldn't do anything for the rest of the neighborhood either then, probably, probably, okay.
Happy if we, sorry, Bob, go ahead.
The, I mean, where was the pump station possibly located? Is it a booster?
Well, the, the fire pump would be in the building.
Right, as far as the sprinkler system, so, this is not talking about that.
No, that's something totally separate, and, and we started looking at, at some budget numbers that were a little shocking.
Right.
We, we wanted to talk about things that were feasible, and we didn't want to throw something at you that was just gonna stop the conversation to be honest.
If your building will have to be completely sprinkled, right?
Correct.
Right. That takes a lot of water.
Yes, it does.
In a short period.
And the last thing we want to do is come in and impact our community in that area.
Happy, if we pulled this in, um, from twenty-six to twenty-four, what's the trade-off? Who, who gets pushed out?
Uh, I don't have my list in front of me. We had some upgrades to wellheads. Uh, the rest of Parkwood, it's the rest of that loop that goes around to, uh, make that improvement, brings up part of that. I think that those are the main ones.
Steve, I've got a question, um, you know, with those possible changes and stuff, I mean, this particular type of water line that we're replacing, I mean, are we putting off something that shouldn't be put off, or?
I mean, for the need that we have up there now, the line's sufficient. Is there a need for an upgrade due to the condition of the pipe yet?
So I know when you, you know, a four inch pipe have so much, and a six inch pipe has fifty percent more or more than that, but, um, you know, to have a, how many square foot building?
Thirty-one thousand.
Thirty-one thousand square foot building full of kids, um, and not have, you know, being able to sprinkle that, I mean, I guess you went to the sprinkler system and see what it requires.
Yeah, the majority of the problem lies in the PSI, the pressure in the line. If you were on a four inch line down on Main Street, you have a hundred and five pound. You do not have a hundred and five pound on a four inch line up there. It's pressure.
So this wellhead thing that Happy was talking about, I mean, um, are we looking at a possible major problem there, or delaying that?
That'd be something we can discuss. It's mostly generators. The idea was for generators on the wellheads in case there's a power outage.
Not something that DNR is requiring, or, right?
Is, are you proposing a cost share on part of this? I assume you have contingencies built into your design bill plan?
I don't know that we, that's contingency built into anything. Um, and so, to be honest, the site work, uh, without the utilities on it came in two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars, I believe, and that's pulling the utilities off of it. We're happy with that number, uh, we anticipated it coming in anywhere from two fifty to three, um, so we think that's a pretty solid number. The issue is, the, when we started this, the, the early childhood center was last. Uh, we started looking at, um, the cost estimates for what these buildings were going to cost and what each project was going to cost. And then we reconvened the facilities committee and, uh, prioritized and, and moved the early childhood center up, because what we didn't want was to get to end the fifth project and to run out of money for an early childhood center for the youngest people in our community and the ones who probably need the most support. Um, so we moved that project up, so we don't know what that fifth project is gonna look like. We've paused on the high school gymnasium for now, um, with an anticipation of the wrestling facility being at the end, and we're hoping to be able to be fiscally responsible, um, with these projects and, and have enough money left over to build a quality athletic facility. Um, so the answer to your question is, until we know what those real numbers are for the early childhood center and St. Genevieve Elementary, we're not sure.
I, I've also heard talk about, I know you currently own like twelve acres of ground there.
Um, is that, yeah, six and, is that right, Bailey? Six and six?
Yeah.
Roughly.
Right, um, and with a thirty-one thousand square foot building, that's three fourths of an acre in coverage. You obviously have other plans up there for something else.
Well, with the parking lot and with the playgrounds, um, also, we, we've tried to, to place this building's footprint in, in the area that makes the most sense regarding the, the site work that has to be done and balancing that. I've asked our architects to flip it and move it here, and then we were, we were putting up retaining walls, and, and the location that we have it now seems to be the best balanced location. Um, how we're able to utilize the rest of the property, uh, with the, the slope that it has, and then right off the back, we have some citizens electric, um, electrical poles off the back, it's going to be limiting going down the hill, plus I think there's some conversation about a retention pond down there, uh, the opportunity to do that. So we would be looking at going up around that substation, and it goes out into the field a little bit that we own in that scenario property. So, yeah, the opportunity is there. What that looks like in the future, I'm not sure.
Well, and it was just my question and stuff of, of going from the four to the six inches, that gonna be just a stopgap for this thirty-one thousand square feet? Are we gonna be prepared for future stuff yet, you know, cause if we're gonna do it, um, you know, let's plan for the future, not just today. So Steve, uh, being this is your, uh, expertise, are you willing to give up these other things in lieu of this?
We, I mean, we can, we can discuss it. We ran, we've never had a generator on our wells to this point. There's a recommendation in my inspection from DNR that we get them. But then also didn't move the tap.
Cause it'll be hard not to, and per my vote, it'll be hard not to, uh, vote in favor of this if you're not in favor.
I think it'd be okay.
So the sanitary sewer, uh, where's that going again? That's a different route.
It's going down to a manhole located just, uh, the west of St. Genevieve.
The south side of the roadway, I guess.
Oh, the south side of Maple, so.
Further down the hill.
And we have enough capacity?
Um, I forgot what your answer was on that cost share when you.
I didn't sidestep that quite far, that's good.
You remember how you started the discussion about his budget constraints?
The youngest and most vulnerable, I think that's how he started explaining.
We have also, don't we, Joe?
More so.
Right.
I mean, we would be open to discussion. It, you know, we're coming to you because this was in your plan initially, the need is obviously there, so, you know, best case scenario, it gets moved up and the city's able to complete it. But obviously, we're open to conversations.
I think there is hope that development could spur, growth could spur as a result.
Be a great place to put another subdivision. Upon that.
I agree. I just think it's, it's a need that was identified by the people in our community for early childhood care, I mean, you've heard somebody talk about it, you've heard a dozen people talking about it, so.
Well, yeah, the early childhood thing is an excellent opportunity, you know, for the people, you know, in our area and stuff, I mean, it's, it's a proven fact, they're popping up. So I think we need to do everything we can within our abilities.
I mean, that's an investment in our future too, I mean, it's a place that that needs to be remedied, so.
Steve finds no negative impact to the plant on the whole if we do this, I mean, I'm in favor.
I think it'd be okay.
That's all I need to hear.
Self-explanatory.
Does anyone have any other?
You have to, I meant, I'm like, yeah, for the cost. If you're willing to move ahead, if you're willing to move ahead, it depends on if we're going to do the engineering or contract with it or schools on the contracts. What if it's gonna go up a little bit?
So I think we've had some initial discussion, Colin, talk.
Sure. Colin Rogers with Brock Miller Construction. One of the things that we could do is, and you can back on the cost share, just to clarify. If you guys do this work, the school still has to put in, in their building, a booster pump for the fire system to still work correctly, which is pretty costly, you know, probably around an additional seventy thousand dollars that the school has to pay, which is not necessarily required on a normal sprinkler system where you have the correct flow, so. With that in mind too, if, if, if the city.
So with the, with the six inch upgrade, it still wouldn't have enough volume or pressure?
It would have enough volume, not enough pressure.
They anticipate the pressure won't increase enough.
Which is that strictly the building's issue, not ours?
Correct, and so that they would be, in order to make the sprinkler system functional, they would still have to do that on there. If there's a, a cost concern, as construction manager, we, we're bidding these packages out actively in phases. And as Joe Taylor mentioned, we pulled off the site utility package, originally, we were gonna bid that with the site work package. But with this procurement process, we have the luxury of phasing those types of bid packages. So we have the ability to do this work and pay for it now. If the city were, if it would help ease the burden financially for your next budget year to reimburse the school district, that could be an option as well.
So you're saying Brock Miller would do this?
Well, the school would pay for it upfront, yes, but we would actually, we're administering the bidding process, so we would bid it out publicly, same as you would with engineered drawings and specs. And we would bid that publicly with several bidders locally. And then they would be contracted through us and the school district would be paying us for those services.
How does that fall into with our current engineering?
There's not a requirement that we go with Cockrum to do it.
Right.
And that's why I say we have to, and it's fine if somebody else drafts the, the, you know, creates that drawing and then they just go out and bid on those drawings.
But they would have an opportunity also to bid as the engineering for them.
We, you know, we would have Taylor Engineering since we're already contracted with the school and Taylor Engineering, we would have them design it to the city's standards.
So that's what's in the code, so they have the numbers in front of them.
There wouldn't be any big advantage to having them, the school district pay for it upfront and then us reimburse them, though, would there?
Just in a matter of time, I.
But moving from one budget year.
Well, we already have, we already have the money in the budget, we just have to amend the projects for.
Procedure.
Yeah.
I think it's the, yeah.
But we don't have the money in the budget this budget year.
No, you pretty much have it in reserves, our reserves are low, so that's why we held off on any of the projects.
But these are dedicated funds that are used strictly for that.
I think you're just getting to a point of where, when do you want to expend that money now?
You're comfortable, so you're spending that money now?
The goal this year was to help the reserve cover the.
I guess I'm comfortable with getting a formal proposal from city and school to, to vote on, a formal proposal.
So it actually is important.
Yeah. Now we can.
Is everybody, for the most part, in agreement with that plan?
We'll have another work session item on it to discuss or during a, but do we need to, I mean, do we want to have another discussion about what the formal plan looks like? I mean, there's a couple of things we're kind of tossing up in the air here tonight.
What, what are those forms?
Well.
Discussion of who's paying the cost.
So that would be part of the intergovernmental agreement. So that's.
So that negotiation has to take place first.
Well, I mean, what do you want to do? Do you want it upfront? Do you want us to pay for it?
Well, what's, what's the ramifications? I guess, you know, what, what's the advantage? I don't know, I don't see any. I mean, we either take it out of the reserve funds or there isn't any dedicated water projects this coming year?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have equipment.
Yeah, so we would have to take it out of reserves if we paid for it first this year.
I'd want to be clear who's paying the cost before I jump in and pay for it, but.
Can you talk about what the benefits are?
No matter what, okay, we on the plan.
Joe just brought up a good point, so we would bid this out hopefully this year, but the work would not take place until twenty-four, so.
Our fiscal year runs till next October.
Next October, I mean, you, we could be looking, I mean, this building, we're not even looking to complete and occupy until December of next year, so. The work can be deferred if that helps.
I don't know if that helps or not, does it?
But the, the other advantage to doing it now is you're, you're locking in, you're securing pricing without inflation or escalation prices. And things have seemed to have leveled out in pricing, but we have not seen great reductions to three years ago, levels of three years ago.
We never will.
So I think what they're looking at is, will the city pay for it? They can, God forbid, now pay for it and then we would reimburse, or we would pay for it when the, when the construction, when the, during construction, as we would any normal water project. We can work that out between now and then, do we want them to be forward with it?
Okay, I have just one more question for Steve. So the project that we would have did up there in twenty twenty-six would not be a six inch main?
It would be a six inch.
It would have been a six inch main anyhow.
That'll be the entire loop bridgeway to Virginia.
Okay.
That's all we're doing actually, just a portion of what we eventually have to do.
It's just kind of expediting that section.
I like partnerships and projects like this, sharing the cost, but anyhow, I think it's a good deal.
Still not biting.
All right, so I guess everybody's somewhat in agreement here that we're okay with that proposal and then we'll bring a formal proposal to the board at a later date, but we can.
We've got some time, we're not, we're not done.
We got some time, but I think give them some peace of mind looking forward.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you all for your time, I appreciate it.
Appreciate you.
Thank you, Dr. Tyler, here, though. Thanks for answering all our questions.
I think your fans are outside waiting for it too.
Uh, work session item number two, this is for easements at St. Mary's Road. This does have an option to close as well, if you see fit.
Do we need to close it?
Well, we're gonna have to buy any?
Well, that's why I'm looking at closing the meeting.
Move for a close session for real estate.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, we have to do a roll call on that, I apologize. Okay, so we have a first and second, I believe Joe's first and Colin and Donovan the second, so, Dan, would you do it?
Hi.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Prince? Alderman Stagger?
Yes.